I'd like to call the meeting to order. Meeting number
Tonight's music selection made by our wonderful city manager Sheila Rose was "One Love" by Bob Marley and the Wailers. Hopefully, I pronounced that correctly.
I did.
The next music selection for the June 12 City Commission meeting will be made by Mayor Riley.
Thank you.
We'd like to remind everyone to please silence your mobile devices. To help with sound quality, please make sure to speak clearly and directly into your microphone. You mute your microphone when you're not speaking. If anyone is having trouble hearing at any point during the meeting, please raise your hand and someone will bring you an audio assistance device. And also, just to let the commission know for this evening's meeting, our request of speak system is not working at the moment, so we will be going old-school style. If you wish to speak, speak in your mic, raise your hand, let the mayor know. I don't know if I would recommend that, but just making you all aware that the request of speak system, you will not be pressing the buttons this evening to speak.
A mere hand raise will suffice. Thank you very much. Mr. Kavanaugh, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Rydel.
Here.
Commissioner Welch.
Here.
Commissioner Brody.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Here.
Mayor Riley.
Here.
City Manager Rose.
Here.
City Attorney Pyburn.
Here.
Thank you. Will everyone stand and join us with a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you.
This meeting is being conducted live with a physical forum present. The material for today's meeting is available online at coconutcreek.net. Anyone wishing to appeal any decision made will need a record of the proceedings, and for such purpose may need to ensure that a verbatim recording of the proceedings is made, including the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based. The archive of this meeting may be requested from the city clerk or may be heard online at coconutcreek.net. If you haven't already, please silence your mobile devices. If you must take a phone call, please excuse yourself and step outside. Respect and proper decorum will be maintained throughout the meeting. Vocal outbursts, jeering, cheering, or applause can impair the rights of others and derail the decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you. First off, we'd like to have a presentation recognizing the members of the 2025 Charter Review Board for their service.
Thank you, Mayor. We would like to recognize the following board members of the Charter Review Board. For District A, Jonathan Album, if you want to come forward. Go ahead and come forward and receive your certificate, and if you don't mind, are we going to, we can take a picture in the middle? For District B, we have David Minzes. I know he said he may not be able to make it. I guess he wasn't able to. For District C, we have Mohammed Rasip. For District D, we have Alex Discoriaza. And for District E, and our board chair was Craig Valvo. And I just want to take a minute just to say that this board worked tirelessly for the few weeks that they were able to convene between January and April, and they worked very hard in order to make sure that they only made the changes they thought were necessary. They are suggesting, and we'll get to that item later, a total of five, six changes with five charter questions, because they didn't want you to have 20 questions on the ballot, like has happened in the past. They were very careful and cautious in making their decisions, and we really thank them for their service. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Input from our residents is invaluable, and we thank you for your time and effort.
And if I could just invite them to stick around if they would like to for item number six, which is the Charter Review Board changes, the charter changes.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak on a non-agenda or consent agenda item? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll move on. Thank you. We will now have, sorry, we're moving forward. Number two, there's a motion approving the minutes from the previous city commission meetings. Do I have? All right. Number three, there's a resolution 2025-077, a resolution authorizing the mayor or designee to execute an inter-local agreement with Broward County, providing for participation and financial support for the NatureScape Irrigation Service and Residential Irrigation Rebate Programs. Is there any item the commission wishes to pull?
Move consent.
Second. Thank you. We have Josh Rydel, Commissioner Rydel moving, and Commissioner Welch second. Thank you. Any discussion on this item, on these items? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Rydel.
Yes.
Commissioner Welch.
Yeah.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Yes.
Mayor Riley.
Yes. Ordinance 2025-016, this is a second reading. Our city attorney, Ms. Pyburn.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Coconut Creek, Florida, amending the city's code of ordinances by amending Chapter 13 Land Development Code, Article 2 Subdivision Regulations, Division 5 Subdivision Design Standards, Section 13-236, Purpose: Adoption of Utilities and Engineering Standards Manual, in order to reference the 2025 edition of the Utilities and Engineering Standards Manual, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Move it.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Welch, seconded by Commissioner Rydel. And we have a presentation.
Good evening.
Thank you.
So I did my present, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. So I did my presentation last week, but this is again guidelines for constructions, for water, wastewater, stormwater, and roadways for contractors, designers to follow, and they've been updated to current industry standards. That's what we have.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other further questions or comments from commission? Thank you. We have, we have two public comments. For item number four, we have Mr. Vic Benenate. Would you like to speak on item four, Mr. Benenate?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
As introduced, my name is Vic Benenati. I'm the AT&amp;T Director for Government Affairs in Broward County. Let me begin by saying my technical folks who have a real job for a living have reviewed the manual. They give it high marks. They appreciate the manual. It helps our technical folks do a good job in your city and do it according to the standards you have. So why am I speaking? I want to talk about easements versus right-of-ways. Normally, the area in the front of your yard where people like AT&amp;T work, that's a right-of-way. If we're working in the rear of your yard, normally that's an easement. And the only point I want to make now, and to make sure the city, city attorney and folks are familiar with, per Florida statute, and it's 337-401-3G, 337-401-3G, AT&amp;T and similar communications companies are exempted from the requirement of getting a permit to work in a utility. And probably you have smart, very capable attorneys are already familiar with that. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it had been mentioned. Those are my remarks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes. Yes, Commissioner.
Sir, I have a question for you. Do you represent the mobility, or do you represent the landline?
All the above. As stated, I'm the government affairs person. I am not an attorney, and I wouldn't pretend to be. My wife is the smart attorney in my family. So I have 53 years with AT&amp;T. I'm here because I enjoy the job and the company, but no. I represent all of them from a top-down basis.
Well, God bless you. I did it for 25 years, and I'm still banged up a little. So we'll, obviously, we'll have to address this, but I just want to see which one you actually represented. Thank you.
Well, there are a lot of people with AT&amp;T you can't believe I haven't been fired by now, but whatever.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there, yes, Commissioner Rydel.
Thank you. I apologize. I didn't get your, your name again.
Vic Benenati. If you'd like, I could give my business card so people have it.
Vic, Mr. Benenati, I'd appreciate it if you could either hand it up to Osama and or hand it to our city clerk, just so it could be circulated amongst the commission. Just, I have a couple, just quick questions of why you're here. How did you come to be here tonight? I'm just, is this something that you were notified as a utility provider, that our staff notified? I just want to know, because, listen, normally, somebody like of your regard is part of a presentation. I didn't know if there was something that was significant or noteworthy to you in this ordinance that should be addressed on a second reading.
In the, in the ordinance, right-of-ways and easements are discussed, and the discussion on easements indicate that the city may require a permit with an easement. And as a non-attorney, that says to me that the city, the folks who wrote this easement understand there are groups and individuals that have to get a permit in an easement. AT&amp;T and our competition, other people that do the same kind of jobs, are by Florida statute exempt from that requirement. But I'll say this to you, 53 years in a telephone company, you didn't have a choice. Today, you have a choice. You have plenty of choices. They want your business. We want your business, so we want to do a good job working in your yards, and we want to do a good job with your service, because we understand if we don't, we won't have you as a customer.
So, sir, I appreciate you being here. I also appreciate this dialogue, because candidly, we don't usually let somebody come up and speak and go back and forth with members of the commission in a nonofficial capacity, which I'm guessing tonight, while you're here with a title, you're not here, you're here as a member of the public. So again, I'll ask the same question. What brought you here this evening due to the notification of our ordinance and the changes? Or is this?
Correct. As a part of my job function, I'm responsible for reviewing agendas for all the cities in Broward County, and I did that. I noticed that you had this item, the utility manual, on first agenda, and I sent that to my technical folks, my attorneys, and I'm here tonight to address it.
Okay. So prior to you coming here and speaking on behalf of AT&amp;T, have you met with our staff? Are you, any of them? Have you talked to them previously prior to showing up tonight?
No, I didn't. To tell you the truth, I was in, I was and am in the process of getting registered to lobby. I haven't done that. I talked to your assistant.
Okay. Listen, I'm not going to cut you off, but normally, we don't do this with members of the public. I wasn't sure I'd get you here in your official capacity. I'm a little disappointed if you're coming in your official capacity, you're not engaging with my lawyers, our utilities director especially, saying, we think, we know, our city attorney is beyond reproach in the state of Florida. So thank you. I don't have any other questions. I think you used up his time. I have nothing further.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Anyone on the commission? Any questions? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Benen. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Craig, four.
He's on six.
He's on six. Thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Kavanaugh, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Rydel.
Yes.
Commissioner Welch.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Yes.
Mayor Riley.
Yes. Thank you.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Coconut Creek, Florida, amending Chapter 20 Utilities, Article 3 Water and Wastewater Regulations, Section 20-35, Type and Maintenance, in order to provide for maintenance compliance of private water and wastewater systems to prevent inflow and infiltration into the system, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date. This item is before you at this time for second reading and second public hearing.
Move it.
Second. Thank you. Commissioner Rydel, seconded by Commissioner Welch. Are there any questions or comments from the city commission? Is there anyone else? Thank you. Mr. Osama.
Good evening. So this is an update on, to our Chapter 20 code regarding utilities and INI more specifically. So this was brought to my attention that online there were some reports of misconception we're trying to do here, and I want to ensure our commission and the public that this is in no way, shape, or form targeting any mobile home parks. That's a statement I can say clearly, because the mobile home parks have already agreements that we've been going back and forth in the last 20 years, and I was part of them, and they have already abided by many of these new changes we have made. They have CCTV done. They had engineers done letters, reports, and so forth, and we're still working on it, because they had the big INI problem. And why mobile home parks were started? Because they already also have meters for water and wastewater where we can compare the ratio between water and wastewater. So that being said, we did not have the tools to deal with other smaller projects. They're private and mainly commercial. Can give you a few names if you'd like, Benyon Square, Walmart, and so forth. So for us to be able to compare water and wastewater ratios, we have to be able to have reeds, and being small parcels, we don't have any meters except for the water meter, but not for the wastewater. So this gives us the tools to ensure that we don't have INI. INI is basically the infiltration of rainwater and groundwater into cracked pipes, and it can cause overflow of the system. It can cause backup into homes. It can cause also, no, it causes us more expenses. Basically, we're treating clear, clean water at a treatment plant. This is what we're trying to do with this ordinance. Any questions?
I will just add that we did see there were social media comments, so we had a fact sheet uploaded to our webpage, as well as having Tiffany, who monitors those social media pages, provide some response and some redirection for those residents that we're asking.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Welch.
Hi. So how are septic and private well systems handled? Is any of that come into play?
No, it doesn't, because then they're connected to our system. They're standalone systems.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Rydel.
Yeah, Osama, I'm going to ask you the same questions, not really like I did last time, because this is the second reading, just to be clear, so we can be succinct and effective. If we're talking about a large, specifically, I think people think we're targeting mobile home parks, or there's something, you would agree with me, actually, right now, there's less restrictions in some of those places than there is other parts of the city.
Correct.
Okay. So there, right now, there, it's less restrictions.
Yes.
And we're just making everything even right now.
That's correct.
In terms of associations, if there's a neighborhood, for example, I don't want to, you know, neighborhood X, I don't want to specifically target somebody, the issue wouldn't be with an individual unit owner. The issue would be with the entire community property, the association in and of itself. Is that a fair statement?
That's a correct statement.
Thank you. And lastly, historically, have we ever, with undue fines, requirements, anything like that specifically targeted these places and tried to put anyone out of business or anything like that?
Not at all.
In fact, would you say the opposite?
Yes, the opposite. We have always long-term game plans to make sure we help them get where we need to.
And you'd agree with me that anybody that ended up in the, you know, the magistrate or anything like that due to compliance issues always, always has the ability coming before this board asking for relief?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I have nothing further. Again, I think it's always important, Madam Rose, I think it's important that you, listen, I don't want to be responsive to social media. I think if we as a board are responding to social media, we're doing something very, very wrong, but I think it's always important to correct information. And, and thank you, Osama, for your work. I have nothing further.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any further questions? Anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay. Thank you. It's a public hearing, and no one has signed up to speak on this item. So with that, I will ask Mr. Kavanaugh to please call the roll.
Commissioner Rydel.
Yes.
Commissioner Welch.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Yes.
Mayor Riley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ordinance 2025-018.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Coconut Creek, Florida, amending the charter of the City of Coconut Creek by accepting the proposed amendments to the city charter as adopted by the City Charter Review Board on April 16, 2025, hereby amending Article 1 Incorporation Boundaries and Charter, Section 106 Rules of Construction, Article 3 City Commission, Section 303 General Powers and Duties Compensation, Section 304 Prohibitions, Article 6 Financial Procedures, Section 604 Lapse of Appropriations, Article 8 Initiative Referendum and Recall, Section 801 General Authority, Section 802 Commencement of Proceedings, Petitioners Committee Affidavit, Section 803 Petitions, Section 806 Action by Petitions, Section 807 Results of Election, Article 9 General Provisions, Section 906 Amendments to Charter, and Section 907 Charter Review, Charter Review Board, providing that a majority of electors voting in the November 3, 2026 general election approves such changes, providing for the form of the ballot, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date. This item is before you at this time for first reading.
Move it.
Second. Thank you. Commissioner Rydel, Commissioner Welch, second. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Just to give you an overview, pursuant to the City of Coconut Creek Charter, Section 907 entitled Charter Review, Charter Review Board, the city commission is required to appoint a charter review board, excuse me, to review the city's charter every five years. The last charter review board convened in 2020. Starting in January of 2025, the charter review board members who were appointed on January 9 began their review of the city's charter and deliberation of proposed changes. Over the course of 13 meetings, the board voted to approve six changes to the charter, which were consolidated into five ballot questions to be voted upon at the next general election to be held November 3 of 2026. As I mentioned earlier, the board worked tirelessly over those 13 weeks, and they had a lot of homework to do, where they had to not only review the charter, but oftentimes they had to review not only our code, but also that of neighboring cities, neighboring cities' charters, state law, and other materials in order to be prepared for each meeting. And each of them came to every meeting very well-prepared for the discussion. They asked very poignant questions, and they were all very engaged, and we appreciate their service. Kathy Mahaffey, our deputy city attorney, was also very involved with working with them and spent a lot of time putting together the documents you see before you. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to be here tonight, but she also sends her thanks to the board. I do want to mention again that as part of the changes that they approved, they are recommending that the Charter Review Board convene in the future, in years that correlate with the general election. So their suggestion is instead of having the Charter Review Board convene every five years, that the Charter Review Board would convene every six years or eight years, depending on the pleasure of this board. If they were to convene every six years, that would actually start in order to line up with a general election five years from now in 2030. And if they were to convene every eight years, it is suggested that they start that process in 2032, which is only seven years from now, but again, that's because we're in an odd year in order to line up with the general election. So first, I would like to get your direction as to whether or not you prefer that the Charter Review Board convene every six years or eight years.
Commissioner Rydel. Okay. Yes, let's, Commissioner Rydel, and we'll go down the line, please.
Okay. So I'm just, we've kind of never had this happen historically, Terrell. I've been through a couple of these. I think Craig was on a previous one. So in regarding this, is the intent, just so I understand the legal process, for us to make a consensus regarding six or eight, and then that will be worked into their recommendations, and they kind of wanted that direction, I say them, because they're here, from us?
Correct.
So does that affect the passage of the item this evening?
It does, just from the standpoint of we need that language in there before we move forward to second reading.
Will there need to be an amendment made on tonight's item, or will that will just be codified in right reading number two?
It will just be codified in reading number two.
Thank you. That was the clarity that I needed. Listen, I think, first of all, I can thank all of them. I think they did an amazing job. I think we all spent time with all of them. I, I, I think meeting more is better. I choose six. I think, you know, elongating things, even if there's not any, there's always things that can change, and I think we're remiss if we meet less, we meet more, not less. So I vote six. And then I have a secondary question in regarding the other recommendation, because I know you didn't get there yet, but they're also making an economic development recommendation regarding the Planning and Zoning Board. Is that a recommendation for consensus to give to you to change the, to change ordinance?
Correct. Yes.
So to do both in one, I would agree with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board to make the ordinance recommendation to add economic development to the, to the list, and I commend them for making recommendations as well, not just charter changes, that really thinking, saying, hey, this shouldn't be in the charter, but this should be this. And I think all of the recommendations in the documents transmitted to us are beyond correct, effective, and should be applied. So to answer your two questions for consensus, Mayor, if I may, six and add economic development.
And if I could just really quickly, on that, in that same vein, they also made a recommendation in their memo that was transmitted to you as backup to this ordinance, providing that at the time that the elected mayor becomes effective in 2029, that you all may consider giving the elected mayor additional compensation at that time. I realize that's not anything that you necessarily have to vote on now. I just would be remiss if I failed to mention that that was part of their recommendations.
I saw that as well. I don't think this, it's timely necessarily to address that today.
Understood.
In my position. If everyone else wants to, so be it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Welch.
Yes. City Attorney Pyburn, just as a point of clarification, the redistricting board will convene in 2026, and when will those results be voted?
Those will likely also be voted upon in the November 2026 election. At the same time as these charter changes.
That we're voting on tonight?
Correct.
I really concur that it should, even though we would be built out by the 2030, pretty much built out, I hope, I hope to see this Main Street development completed before I'm finished, but, so I would think that there's still, there's always room to look at our charter and ensure that we have the best product that we're abiding by as a government, governing legislators that we can and keep it current. But I also want to say to the board that served this time, it was a very diverse group, and I, even those that I, I only attended the one, but I listened in to the recordings, and it was a very respectful and civil and it was a very respectful and civil conversations, even in agreeing to disagree, and I found that to be extremely commendable. So, it was a good combination of folks that were assembled on the board, and for that, I really thank each and every one, not just my appointee. So, I would, my vote would be to keep the convening of the Charter Review Board every six years.
And economic development, add it?
I think that's a good, a good component to add to the planning and zoning. There are enough variety of recommended qualifying candidates to serve on that board to fill in the remainder of the board, including the alternate. So, my one question is this, would that apply to whether that person was an alternate or a regular member of the board?
It's just a recommendation for the disciplines that are suggested to serve on the board.
So, you didn't answer my question?
So, both.
Okay. All right.
Okay, good.
It's not a requirement, it's a recommendation, but the idea is that you would hopefully select from those people that are most qualified and that fall within those disciplines that are specifically delineated in the code before selecting someone else, and the suggestion was to add economic development to that list of disciplines, which I know include engineer, architect, real estate, professional construction background, that type of thing, I don't have the whole list memorized, but certainly we can put that into an ordinance and bring it before you if that is the pleasure of the board.
And that will be codified in the referendum question?
No, that would just go forward in a change to our land development code, which would come forward at another meeting.
Is that the combination of the six to five?
No. That is just another recommendation they made, recognizing that they're changing, they're proposing a recommendation to the code, which is separate from the charter, which doesn't have to go to the voters, but it's up to you all if you want to move forward with it.
I have no problem moving forward with that.
I apologize if I confused anybody and made it seem like it was two. The one consensus item is for the charter amendment, the second is for the ordinance. So, if I made it seem like it was everything, I apologize to my colleagues.
Thank you.
You should. Okay. No point taken.
No.
Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate the clarification. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brody?
I'm going to make this short because puck drop is at eight. I think what these guys did in this charter review was amazing. I also listened to what was going on, and I was pretty impressed, a bunch of smart people sitting in a room, making decisions for our city, so I was pretty impressed with all of you. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart for you guys showing and being dedicated to this. I also think that six years is the way to go, because I just think things change so rapidly now. If we wait, we're going to be behind. So, I think six, six years is where we need to be to keep that conversation legitimate for stuff that's progressively changing. Hell, the last 90 days have been pretty crazy. And I'm going to agree with Commissioner Rydel on that, I think we do need to add the economic part of this. And so, I'm going to keep it short, and so, Vice Mayor, it's your turn.
Thanks, Commissioner. Six years, yeah, 100% on board. I appreciate what you guys did. I know those meetings must have been just tedious and intense, and, I don't want to say intense in terms of that, but just intense, long, and just draining, and appreciate all the time you put into it. The only thing I'm having with the economic development is, how do you prove it? Let's say you have people who apply, say, every, let's just say, everyone who has applied doesn't have economic development as criteria, what would we then do? What would constitute economic development? There are many layers involved in that, in that title of economic development. So, that's my only thing, what would be, what would be the language that would dictate what economic development is for somebody who applies? Somebody could say, hey, I ran a shopping plaza, so we brought in a store to my, to our plaza, that's economic development. Very true. Possible. So, I want a little clarity.
I would, I would suggest that, similar to a certified planner, it would be a certified economic development professional. So, there are certifications for certified economic development professionals, just like a certified architect, so that, that is what the staff's interpretation of it would be. So, we'll draft the language.
Right.
In a proposed ordinance, and you can look at those criteria.
So, where it says here, so, so, to understand, to add economic development to the list of criteria for qualifying to serve on the Planning and Zoning Board, every member?
No.
Just one?
It's an alternative criteria.
Right, but it's, it's a list of criteria. Criteria is something you must meet. So, let's say people apply, don't meet that criteria, what would we then do?
If I may, it's discretionary, and it's just a recommendation.
Okay.
So, it would be kind of a list of menu items that you would have the opportunity to pick based on the applicants that apply, it just might give them a little feather in their cap or a little extra.
Got it. It's not binding.
Something, right. Exactly.
Correct. Okay. So, you don't have to, understand, because in my head, I'm like, well, some people might apply, they might not, you know, but they might know the city really super-duper well. So, is it binding, or is it more of our discretion?
It's your discretion.
Thank you.
It's just a recommendation.
Okay. So, yeah, add it, that's fine with me. Six years, move, to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to commend the charter board. You guys were very professional, respectful of each other. It was a, a group that was diversified, but yet had the same thing in common. So, thank you for what you have accomplished in a short period of time, considering the, considering the, the task at hand. But yes, six years is fine, obviously, and economic development criteria is fine as well. So, I concur with those.
Thank you. And as mentioned earlier, you don't need to vote on that, I was just asking for a general consensus, and as it relates to the timeframe with which the future Charter Review Boards will convene, we'll just write that in between first and second reading, and so you will vote on that formally as part of that adoption at that time, and there was nothing to amend. Otherwise, I can go through each of the suggested amendments, or, at a high level, and give an overview, or I know that you all have done your homework and read through them, so if you would rather just have me answer any questions that you have, it's your pleasure. I don't know if any members of the public have signed up to speak either.
First, yes, I would like to ask if anyone does want to speak. I think Craig Valvo, you did sign up, did you want to speak? Please come up at this time. Thank you. Craig was the chairperson of our Charter Review Board.
So, thank you, Craig Valvo, 5122 Northwest 74th Court in Coconut Creek. I did sign in to speak, just in case there was a specific issue regarding the amendment or the proposed, the proposed ordinance, I wanted to be available to speak or comment, should it be necessary. Given the microphone, I don't want to waste the opportunity, though, to thank you all for your service. The public should know that, I thank you for the kind words for the board, the board that worked together, did have a common goal, serving the community, did work very, very well together, even in the moments we disagreed. Fantastic. And you all should know that the city, the city staff was incredible, really, really incredible. I'm not just saying that, that was the highlight of my experience, being, being involved in the team. And the public should know that each city commissioner took time to meet with us individually and go over the ordinance, things, their thoughts, they, they got drilled with questions and stuff, and sometimes it was uncomfortable, but the team did really well, because the team was really led by fantastic staff. Terrell, I've told you 100 times, you're the highlight of our experience. Thank you so much.
Yes.
And Kathy, as well. So, and Joseph, fantastic.
Thank you.
Anything we threw at them, they had answers for everything, and if they didn't, they accommodated us to almost an embarrassing level. So, thank you all, and we're here if you have any questions about any specific items. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that has any comments? If not, I would like to make a statement. I'd like to read a statement. As much, and I respect everyone's opinion, and I'm grateful for the effort that was put into it, but I find it necessary that I do have to make a statement. So, commissioners, staff, members of the public, please bear with me, because tonight I want to speak directly and clearly about a proposal that was under consideration and that the Charter Review Board is recommending, and that's to prohibit individuals serving on a homeowner's association, excuse me, or condominium board of directors from running for city commission. Actually, you could run for city commission, but once you're elected in, you would have to give up your seat in your community, in your homeowner's association, or your condo. As your mayor, I have to say that, and I know I shouldn't be taking this personally, I believe this proposal is not only unnecessary, but it's fundamentally wrong. Let's start with the most obvious point. Any of the people who serve on HOAs and condominium boards are among the most committed and capable members of our community. These are individuals who have already proven they're willing to step up, take responsibility, and do the hard work of local leadership. Why do we disqualify them from broader public service? In fact, serving on a community board should be seen as a qualification, not as a disqualification. Second, this proposal effectively tells people they must choose between serving their residential community or serving their city. That is unfair. It is also a form of exclusion that runs counter to the democratic principles we stand for. Every resident has the right to step forward and run for office, and every voter has the right to decide who they believe is best suited to represent them. Let's be clear, this isn't about conflicts of interest. Any legitimate concerns about overlapping responsibilities can be addressed through existing ethics, rules, disclosures, recusal procedures. We already have those tools in place. We don't need to impose broad restriction that penalizes people for participating in their neighborhoods. Excuse me. Third, this proposal places a necessary burden on the very communities we serve. Imagine a neighborhood with a strong board leader, someone residents trust and depend on. Now, imagine telling those same residents that they must give up that leadership if their board member runs for city office. In fact, it's very possible some residents might vote against a city candidate they support, just to keep them serving locally. That's not fair to them, and it's not fair to the candidate either. More broadly, this sends the wrong message. It says that community service might actually cost you opportunities to serve at a higher level, and that is not a message we should ever send in a city like ours, our city that values engagement, participation, and leadership at every level. Finally, let me say this. When we start disqualifying people from participating in government based on where or how they serve, we begin walking down a very slippery slope. Today, it's HOA board members, tomorrow's could be school volunteers, nonprofit directors, or small business owners. That is not a direction I believe this city should go in. As mayor, I believe our job is to encourage leadership, not limit it, to welcome participation, not restrict it, to trust the voters, not make decisions for them. So, I urge this commission and our community to reject this proposal. Let's honor the commitment of those who serve their neighborhoods. Let's make room for them to serve their city, and let's continue to build a government that is open, inclusive, and grounded in the principles of democracy. Thank you for your time and your patience. I just feel that this restriction basically rewards bad behavior. So, and those of you that know what's been going on for the last several years know exactly what I'm talking about. So, thank you for your patience, thank you for listening, and those are my thoughts. Commissioner Rydel?
Thank you. If I may, so I want to talk holistically first. I want to talk holistically first, with all due respect to your comments. I was the vice president of an association when I ran for office, I resigned immediately thereafter. I'm just, I'm just saying it globally, two different judges that live in our, live in our, in our community had served on boards, and they resigned thereafter. Just, I'm saying that for no other reason. I would ask mayor for a point of privilege. I had a long conversation with Mr. Valvo after the recommendations came out prior to this evening, I would ask him to be able to come up and talk about that one item, is that, is that okay?
Absolutely.
If he's willing. Mr. Valvo, can you?
Absolutely.
Mr. Valvo, could you come up and just address that? And then I have a couple other comments about other items and things of that nature as well. So, and, and Mayor, don't get me wrong, I wasn't saying that in support or opposition of the item, I was just saying it in terms of more.
What?
Legal issues in my head at the time that I was trying to not have to do with, and I think Craig, I really hope, I hope, you're going to say what I think you're going to say, so I'm going to, I'll ask the mayor to turn it over to you.
Yes.
So, again, Craig Valvo, 5122 Northwest 74th Court, Coconut Creek, Florida. Thank you. Mayor Riley, huge respect for you, and I hear, I don't know if I should say, I hear pain, maybe a little disappointment, a little bit of sadness, and a little bit of scrutiny and attack in your statement, and I understand it, speaking as a, an HOA president, I think for 13 years running now, something like that, and, but I want to encourage you, first of all, I'm a fan of yours, I will say, on our Charter Review Board, I made this recommendation. I made it the first time we met, I said this is something I'd like to talk about, our board talked about it, we ended up agreeing to move forward with it, and we're just proposing it to the city. I, the only hesitation I had in, in making the recommendation was the respect, honestly, the respect I have for you, and the concern that it would be misconstrued, and I think it, at least by one of you, it may be misconstrued. And I want to tell you sincerely, it's done as a, the recommendation is made out of respect to you and out of protection for you. The shenanigans, and I'll say loosely, and I'll use that word generically, that went on over the last several months in our city, I saw a woman that I know, to the extent that I know, to be a fine woman, be attacked, because the door was left open, and she was left vulnerable. It's not just enough for our city officials to be free from conflict of interest, to be innocent of any assertions made against them, that's not enough. We need to be above reproach. And quite frankly, and I say this with a lot of care towards you, the door is left open when you are the president of an HOA and a commissioner, an elected official, an employee of the city. And I always believe personally, and I ask myself this question, almost every, every year, I ask myself this question personally, what is your highest and best use in life? Where can you have the biggest impact in your community, in your city, with your family, in your local house of worship, whatever it is that you do, where can you, and how can you have the, the highest and best use? You've risen to what most would consider to be the pinnacle of leadership in our city. It's clearly your highest and best use, and you have the capacity to not just do it, but to do it well. To see you flanked by a perceived conflict of interest that doesn't exist, that would not otherwise exist had you not held that office in the, in the association, I think is a disservice to you. And in all sincerity, it's not out of a conflict, it's out of being above reproach and the desire to see you not dragged through, but in future, officials in the city to not be dragged through the mud and to be accused of wrongdoings that didn't exist. So, if I were to run for any kind of office in the city, I would, I would see which office is a higher and better use of my time and my talent, my treasures, and I would probably make the decision that I should hand off the association responsibilities that I've came, that I've managed to another person in my community. But I assure you, it was out of respect for you and out of a desire to care for you and to protect you that I ever made those recommendations.
I, I understand that, and I don't want you to feel that, am I taking it personally? It's hard not to, but I'm not, I'm truly not, because I, and I do understand what the city has gone through, for, for absolutely, with no, no founded evidence, no, no reason, strictly malicious content, that's it, intent. So, this person with the malicious intent to bring down someone has basically tried to destroy my reputation. I'm grateful that I've had the support of my commission, of my community. I have absolutely no doubt that there is nothing, nothing, that they will find in my past, in my present, in my future, that will tear me down or the city. that will tear me down or the city. Of course, the city and my community is paramount in everything I do. So whatever is good for the city, I will absolutely agree with. But I want you to know that I love what I do. I've been blessed with the energy and the love of my home and my city to do what I, what I continue to do. I think that, again, that this, this change, this ordinance will affect the way people vote for someone in the future. Absolutely. There's no doubt in my mind. I know I have 90% of win more. I know that. That's, that's supporting me. I know that. Maybe they don't want to lose me, so if I'm running for office, even if it's not me, if it's you, if it's anyone that lives, they could basically not vote for me because they don't want, or you, to resign from, from your HOA. I, that, it's just-
That's possible.
It's very possible. But I'm also, I found it necessary that I had to make my feelings known. So, and that's, that's all. I don't mean to belinger this or to drag it on, but thank you, because I know there's a Panther game, and that's more important than, than me.
Can I finish my comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Can I, can I just make a point of order?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
Sorry. I just want to make a point of order.
Sure.
I should have said this at the beginning, and I apologize. You do not unfortunately have the power to change the recommendations of the Charter Review Board, only fix clerical errors. You can put forward your own suggested changes to the charter, if you wish, in a separate document, and then both would travel to the voters for a vote. Just to be clear, anything that's decided on, even once it, once this is passed on second reading, it would not be effective until after the November 2026 election.
All right. Vice Mayor.
I just had one question about it. Why was it, why wouldn't it be resigned to run? Why would you wait? Why was the decision to be after, if they win, they have to resign? Because if they're running, and they're still the president, for example, they still, or a member of the board, whatever, they still might be getting lots of, you know, if you're going to compare to protect, right? Because that's what I'm trying to understand here. If we're trying to protect the candidate, why wouldn't it be you have to resign the position in the board to run, rather than having them go through what could be what we just saw?
Yeah. Ms. Pyburn, if you could, I hate to ask something of you, but I'm not, my recollection was that it wasn't, was it to be installed in office?
Installed.
Right? It wasn't to run.
Correct. It was installed.
It was run. If you win the election-
Then you have to resign.
On your way to City Hall to be sworn into office.
Correct. I understand that. But, but if you were trying to protect the candidate, why wouldn't you have them resign to run, to remove them totally from that other, that other sphere?
I can't speak for the other board members. In my opinion, the conflict of interest wouldn't start until you took office. So, and, and I don't think there's any, there's any conflict of interest. I think we need to be above reproach, though, and avoid any assertions of conflict of interest. So in other words, you don't have any authority in the city when you're running for office?
Yeah. I was, I think you might have been jumping maybe what I was about to say.
I'm not jumping what you have to say. I had comments that I think would have cleared a lot of this up, but I'm happy to let everyone else go, and I'll, I'll speak at the end of it.
All right. Because that would be the way of like protecting the candidate from, you know, I mean, because you were talking about protecting the candidate. I don't know if conflict of interest was so-
Yeah.
I don't know. That's why, that's what my whole thing, you know, if commissioner wants to keep going.
Just to reply, I wasn't looking to protect the candidate. It was the office holder to protect from accusations. The candidate is a non-consideration.
The board, the person as an off, you were wanting to protect the board member?
That's correct. Yeah. The city commissioner, yes. And, and I think, just so you know, if you, if you were to resign from your HOA position in order to run, I think that would deter people from wanting to run.
Commissioner Rydell.
Thank you. And Craig, I just wanted you to come up to provide clarity. I appreciate the mayor's remarks regarding the items. I appreciate the candor of all of you. I've sat, I listened to all of it, just like, at the time, Mayor Welch, not Commissioner Welch. It was, we went through painstaking discussions on it. I heard it all. I will also say, we're talking about, there is a conflict. So at the end of the day, Jackie, with all candor, you recused yourself on win more votes. I was his vice president. The first year I was in office, I was his vice president. When I took office, I resigned. One of the first items was a neighborhood enhancement grant that I recused myself from. Because a perceived, not an actual conflict, a perceived conflict for the people. So there is conflicts in those situations that these jobs take you to. Little different being in a neighborhood where me and Craig live, as opposed to where Jackie lives. But there is a perception that is weaponized, that can be weaponized. So, listen, I, I support all of your, all of your changes. You guys took a painstaking amount of time. I support putting them for, for ballot. Just like we put an elected mayor for ballot. Half the people on this day didn't agree with it. Half of them did. They voted how they wanted to. And the residents can vote, and we can activate and, and activate at the ballot box. That's the purpose of it. So, I, I get it. I support, Jackie, I support you fully. And I've said that countless times, I support you, and I think your dual positions was weaponized against you. I appreciate your candor in trying to say, we can fix it. But at the end of the day, I got to tell you, you just, you kind of warmed my heart a little bit with highest and best use of who we are as people, and I think that's really admirable, and it's something that we all got to look at. So, but Jackie, I think you make some good points, but the people of Coconut Creek decide. I might, I have a technical question for Terrell, based on Jackie's kind of position on this. And again, I don't know from the rest of my colleagues. I haven't heard from them. Do we, I, we don't, we can't change this. But do we need to go item by item, or can we pass this as a slate?
You pass it as a slate.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm good.
Anyone else have comments or questions? No? Thank you, Craig. Thank you. Okay, there. All right. Let's call the roll, please. Mr. Kavanaugh.
Commissioner Rydell.
Yes.
Commissioner Welch.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Yes.
Mayor Riley.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. A motion to accept the Lakewood East Neighborhood Parking Study that was prepared, written, and reviewed by the Coridino Group and city staff and recommending the following parking locations: Northwest 10th Street, Northwest 6th Street, Northwest 49th Avenue, Northwest 7th Court, and Northwest 8th Street. Is there a motion and a second?
Move it second.
Okay. Vice Mayor Wasserman, Commissioner Brody. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Mike Rigetti, would you make your presentation? Thank you.
I do.
You have a question, right?
I just have, I have a comment, and I'm just going to make it with an intent, and I defer, I'm going to defer to Commissioner Wasserman. It's his district. I mean, can I just ask a general, mayor, if I may? And I don't like doing this.
Yes.
Does anybody here from Lakewood support this? Good. Okay. So here's my question, and I defer to Commissioner Wasserman, the Vice Mayor Wasserman. I apologize. In the title of this item, I just want to say this. "A Motion to Accept the Lakewood East Neighborhood Parking Study That Was Prepared, Written, and Reviewed by the Coronado Group and City Staff and Recommending the Parking Locations." There's a problem in that. It should say, "That was reviewed and recommended by the group, city staff, and the residents." So my understanding is there was a public meeting, public meeting, consultant report on our agenda. No public meeting after it. We should not be moving forward with this meeting. There should be a public meeting where all these people, and if they want to speak tonight, they're more than welcome to. I will attend the meeting. This, we should not move forward on this item tonight until all of those people have feedback in terms of this report.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
And I appreciate Commissioner Rydell, you know, with that. And yes, there was a process. There were people who attended the meetings, and then it came on the agenda on May 8th. And we had this on May 8th, and we asked to table it, to provide, and I even spoke to John, you know, about, you know, not having people come to that meeting because we were going to table it, to give Lakewood more, more time to understand, to understand this. But in listening to what Commissioner Rydell said and the people here, I mean, it does make sense that if we're going to change somebody's neighborhood, if we're going to do that, there needs to be that one extra step to, to get input again on what the study says. Because they came, they, then we had the study, and now we should have a regroup of the residents. I understand it's, it's time, it is what it is, but haste makes waste. And once you, once you start making moves, you can't go back. So taking the extra time to meet and present will not hurt this process, and I would support, you know, tabling this till a later date.
Okay. Thank you. So let's make, so we need a motion and a second for a table. So Commissioner Rydell.
I mean, I'll make the motion. The only hesitancy I have is when people come to City Hall that want to speak to their elected officials. I do not want to take away any of these people that signed in to speak, that came to speak, but I am prepared to make the motion. But I would like to give these people an opportunity, if they, all the residents, if they choose to. But I'm prepared to make that motion so we can have a true public setting and have real feedback that's going to affect everyday people.
Okay. We do have several residents that have requested to speak. Mr. Kavanaugh.
Yeah. So the first individual that signed up to speak on this item is Perry Egglesky, followed by John Leonard. Where's John?
Thank you, Mr. Rigetti.
You said John Leonard?
John Leonard.
John? Perry?
I'm going to ask, because I don't even know what the final ruling or suggestion is. That's why I'm here. So I don't know what-
Perry, could you just come up? You got to, you got to.
Excuse me, Commissioner Rydell. May I, I'm going to ask Mr. Rigetti to make his presentation, if you don't mind, so we all know exactly what we're talking about. And then we could have the residents speak at that point. Because I don't think that everyone knows exactly what's being proposed right now.
Well, then I'll make the motion to table now then. I move to table.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So then there's no further discussion? Okay, then.
So in follow-up, staff will schedule a public work style meeting where the report is available for the residents. In fact, the consultant called in sick tonight, so they will be asked to attend that meeting as well with the city staff.
We're going to basically understand, we're going to get the consultant. We're going to push this information out to Lakewood East. Everybody's going to get a message about this to make sure that they, they should come. If they, how is it going to be advertised to them? Because I did receive a complaint that it wasn't advertised well, and I understand we, you know, we do, we got to do. But there was a sign in front of the neighborhood, and, you know, there was a request even to have a QR code where somebody could scan, and it would go to the, you know, it was a very interesting idea. I think John, where's John at? There he is. He, he brought up that idea, to have some sort of scannable thing. So when you're having something like this in a neighborhood, when people are driving in, they see the ordinance, or they see the thing, or that something's going to happen, maybe if there was a scan, they could read a little bit of information about it when they get home, you know? I don't know. But the idea is we're going to-
We will push the information out, whether it's by email, direct mail, or making it available in the community, and have another public meeting where the individuals can come, look at the proposed plan, talk directly with the consultant, and come to, and the commission.
Yeah.
Of course.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. And I would, I would really like to ask at this time that we don't speak out to each other and that we kind of wait to be recognized. Thank you. Okay. Well, with that, we have to vote on the table. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Rydell.
Yes.
Commissioner Welch.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Yes.
Mayor Riley.
Thank you. City managers report.
Thank you, mayor. It was wonderful to see several of you today at the MPO meeting. And I just want to remind everyone of the Memorial Day celebration Monday morning at 9:00. It gets better and better every year. Go Cats.
Thank you to the residents that did come here to support or to speak. Thank you. Thank you. City attorney.
As you're all aware, I sent you some dates regarding the joint board meeting with Broward County over the landfill. And I got some feedback from you all. Thank you. At this point, I'm going to aggregate those dates, and I'm going to check with Broward County. And as soon as I have a definite date, I will let you know. You may want to at least put the following dates on your calendar as a hold for now. And that would be June 13th, July 11th, August 1st, August 8th, and August 22nd.
July 11th is the date that I had to know.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't catch that.
I'm sorry.
So not that date.
Commissioner Welch.
I raised my hand. I did raise my hand.
Okay. Not that date, then.
I beg your pardon?
I said, sorry. So not that date, then. I apologize. So it'll be June 13th, August 1st, August 8th, and August 22nd. If you could just put a hold on your calendar for those dates until I get back with you, and maybe next week, because I don't know how long it'll take the county to shop those dates around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Rydell. Yes, she did.
As I can. Solid Waste Waste Meeting was this week. And I, and first of all, there was some miscommunication. I stressed the importance of all of us coming. I stressed the importance of all of us coming, and then Sheila sent out an email saying, like, you didn't need to come. I just want to be really clear with that to all of you. That was a little, I stressed to Sheila the need for staff not to come. I would have loved all of you to come. So let me just clear, sometimes you miss marks in text messaging and phone calls. So, my colleagues, obviously always welcome to come. I didn't need upper-level administrative staff there. Very, 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 very disappointing draft plan of the Solid Waste Authority that we have wasted years and years and years on. I urge you all to read it. The recommendations are essentially comical, apolitical, not progressive, in the terms of looking at future technologies, and saying essentially things that we've known. It was a rough meeting. I'm happy to download with staff and give everyone the update on it. There was, I gave significant comments, our city attorney was listening, there was a Zoom link, about what should be, what shouldn't be, and some of the problems. Luckily, the chair is very much on, I don't want to say Team Creek, it's a bad thing, but hey, the way of the everyday person, in terms of how we're moving forward with that. I think you're gonna see some modifications in the draft plan, more specifically. The worst thing you could do in solid waste is landfill. Everyone in the world agrees to that, but the solid waste recommendation is, we need to keep landfilling and actually get another landfill. We don't need waste of energy, they're looking at terrible recycling. Mike Heimbeck isn't here. The most disappointing thing is, they're not even making now recommendations. Zero recommendations for right now. So, it puts an onus on our staff, which Mike, Harry, they're on top of it, just to update you all, try, and again, I know we got puck dropped nine minutes ago, to move that, but this is important stuff. We're going to need to activate now, whether Sandy, it's gonna dovetail into something else, whether it's about projects that we're doing, initiatives that we need to push out individually. We are ahead of the curve on their education efforts. They want to have consistent messaging and things like that, and they really hit it on education, communication, outreach. They missed the mark. They missed the mark on a lot of big issues. And this is like, I mean, I feel like I'm beating my head against the wall, like the same conversation we had with like, the Broward League of Cities, like, what are we, again, I don't have a problem saying it, like, what are we really doing? We participate, like, are they coming to help? I don't know if the Solid Waste Authority's gonna deliver to what this city expects. And I feel good, Nancy Mateer, Bowen in Coral Springs, she's super positive, but the recommendations don't even adhere to recommendations that she's traveled around the country to look at and has presented on. So, very disappointed. To let everyone know, our contract is up 18 months from now with Republic. I would ask, in terms of, there's ordinances and contract language that's coming out that will be unified and consistent with the Solid Waste Authority in some capacity. There's also, I've lamented to all of you about franchise agreements and some of these other things, as well, in terms of our bulk waste, in terms of recycling contracts and things like this. In talking to Sheila, I'm gonna ask for consensus. It's up to all of you. I'd like to be kind of, I'd like to dive in with Republic on some of these issues, happily to report back to you on some of the contract language. Republic's trying to get a five-year extension from us right now. I don't know if that's good or bad, but I'm, what'd you say? You shook your head.
They can only get the amount of extensions that are provided for in the agreement and contemplated.
Doesn't change what they asked for.
Okay, fair enough.
They asked for five. I would ask, if the commission's okay with it, for me to work with, and Sheila, I know I had spoke to you about it, but to work with sub-level staff in terms of a renewal for our waste agreement, to make sure not only the contract language, as well as Sandy, I've heard you loud and clear with some of the pilot projects, to make sure that there's language and it's gonna be included. I would ask just if my colleagues are okay with me kind of representing us with Republic, if there is a renewal, or with whatever waste provider, looking at that, if everyone's okay with that. That's the consensus I wanted. Anybody?
Let's clarify then, you're gonna work in conjunction with staff?
Yeah, of course. But just to be the rep of the five of us, dealing with contract renewal.
Well, how does that float into our city attorney? Our city attorney representation in the contract?
I'm not trying to step on either of those wonderful ladies' toes, I'm trying to work with them progressively, to make sure the contracts are not only in compliance with the Solid Waste Authority, and candidly, this request of consensus, they're both on board with.
No, I just needed clarification.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I don't want to, I'm not trying to step, I'm trying to be the best rep for our cities in future contract needs.
We will look at all language, but I have no objection.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Good to go, that's why we hired her.
Jeff, Jackie?
As long as our city attorney and our city manager are willing.
Yeah, Josh isn't going rogue here. This isn't me going rogue.
Josh can't go rogue.
I promise you.
Josh can't go rogue on us. Okay.
I'm working the best in your city. I had two other quick things, in terms of events and things like that, but I just want to address this, put the picture up. Put the picture up. Tell you a story, and this is how amazing our police department is. You got it?
It's coming.
Got a phone call. Ready, Fred? Boom, zoom in on it. Okay. I get a phone call from a neighbor, calls me Saturday, Saturday morning, freaking out, she's screaming, this is one of our dearest friends, and she's like, "There's a snake in my house, there's a snake in my house, there's a snake in my house, Josh, you gotta come." I have her on speaker, I'll be right, her husband's out of town. "Josh, you gotta come over." I get Jamie, I go, "We're getting in the car, I gotta go," and Jamie looks at me, and she's like, "Really? You're going to catch a snake?" Laugh, feel it, "You're gonna catch a snake." Literally, I go, "What should you do?" "I'm coming right over." Before I got there, Officer Basada, former Marine as well, responded faster than me. I appear in the bedroom, about a four-foot snake is in her bedroom, a four-foot racing snake is literally crazy in her bedroom, going nuts. Basada comes in, I come in with a pillowcase, the guy catches a snake, captures a snake, we take the snake, we get out of there. I got, and I wrote an accommodation to Fred about it, I sent him the picture. Did he get Officer of the Month, or what do you get?
I got the snake.
Whatever it is. So, I'd be remiss, and again, I want to be as succinct as I can. We are not doing our job if we're saying that, and the funniest thing is, I talked to a couple of the guys on the road, and they're like, "He's crazy, we wouldn't have done that." But.
It was your lucky day, in other words.
That he got there first? It was 100% his lucky day he got there first. But I gotta tell you this, the fact that literally, we had an officer, because we don't even have an animal officer right now, I know we're between that, one of our road patrol officers sprung into action, went into a bedroom, caught a giant snake, which is great, and that's what you call customer service. So that's the picture. I will skip some of the other things, and I'll talk to staff, but I appreciate the consensus of my commission, that's all I have.
Oh my gosh.
Wait, no.
Passing this out. I'm gonna bring this up at our next meeting, please take one and pass it down. This is an ordinance, I apologize. This is an ordinance. Sheila has a copy, I gave Scott a copy. You know those giant bins that we have, this is solid waste as well, the giant bins that we have where people leave all their clothes donations, that just make shopping centers look terrible? We all know it. We have those technically banned in the city. This is a progressive thing that certain companies are suggesting, to do it in a creative way, because just so everyone knows, municipal solid waste, 8% of it, and I've said this to this commission before, 8% of it is textiles. This is an ordinance that two municipalities, one is passed, the other's about to pass next week, in terms of, an ordinance that we can put in, and this is just standard language, that allows the right vendors to come in, to collect this and recycle it. So take a look at it, I'll bring it up next meeting with staff.
And we're having it in our recycle drop-off centers.
Exactly.
Okay, so, let me just, let me move on. I need to get a consensus, if I can, start off with. The area aging on aging of Broward County is having their, can't find it, Broward County seniors that they're going to induct, and one of them is our resident, that I met when I very first moved here in 1997, Susan Gilbert. So, I was hoping to get consensus to be able to go, it's a $60 ticket. And I need your thumbs up? Did I get it?
Of course.
Okay, well, I never, I never had, I can't wait. Okay, so moving on, Sprouts, they are already the leader in composting and recycling, which is what we're trying to promote in our city. I'm telling you, I'm so dang glad to see them here, I can't stand it. And hopefully, we'll be able to roll it out to the big-name bucks grocery, that will shame them into doing something very similar. But I know our waste and recycle manager is on that. Today, I wanted to acknowledge our community involvement awards for Broward County schools. It was an extremely valiant, hefty document that was produced to show all the dollars, sweat equity, by Bernadette Hughes. It's not her fault that we didn't get it. We lost to Dania Beach, but they coughed up $10 million to build their cheap way out for EO Emergency Operations Center, so, you know. But I think we'll be back with a vengeance next year. And then, on to MPO, and on the way out, waiting for my, waiting for my car to come back, I met one of our neighbors' husbands, who was there to recognize one of the MPO winners, Bill Walker and the Water Taxi. And her husband is the executive sales director there, and he said, he's been looking for a way to pull in the neighboring coastal cities, to promote events and connections to the Water Taxi. Pompano Beach Water Taxi is now back on the bandwagon, and he'd like to start with Coconut Creek, to find a way to loop us in. I'll pass this down to our very capable city manager, Sheila Rose, but he's a resident here in the city, he and his wife, matter of fact, in Coquina. But, anyway, it was a good way to end that part of the day.
Did you have the Water Taxi for her?
What?
I'm asking an honest question.
No, but you can go there, the idea is to promote to our residents reasons to go there and participate in the Water Taxi connections.
I thought we're dredging a loop to the Water Taxi.
You know what? The C-14, I used to call it, our mini intercoastal, when we had a boat. And I just want to end by thanking Michael Rigetti for alleviating my fears of how close the playground that SOS built was to the existing wall there by the Sawgrass, because he led me to believe that that will stay in place until the new wall, when it's built, will be built north of it, not nearer the playground. So, anyway, that's the end of that. Let's go watch the Panthers.
Yeah, you just took my thing away. You just stole my opening line. All right. So, we have a flag donation going on, I want to remind everybody to bring the flags, and they have to be the knitted type of stars, not the laminate ones. What they do is they cut those stars out, and they hand it to veterans. We're gonna have a representative, and of course, our lovely Linda is gonna be out there handing those out on Memorial Day, which by the way, is Monday, 9:00 AM. I expect to see everybody out there, hot and sweaty like the rest of us, and giving praise to our fallen troops. This one's always a tough one for me to get through. Promise I won't write a dark one this time. I know the last one was a little dark, my wife was like, "That was dark, John." But, you know, it is tough, when you know that you've lost fallen friends, and you know, I think we forget, that it's not just that we lose them in combat, we continue to lose them through suicide, and I've lost too many after war, to think that Memorial Day means more than just what we lose in combat, because I think we lose them there, and we just don't know it until years later, and even decades later, that we've lost them. So it's important to me that everybody comes out and, you know, gives these fallen heroes, you know, the praise that they deserve, whether it was in combat, or when they got home, and we take care of our veterans. It's a very sad one for me. As you all know, I gave a speech about losing one of my own personal friends, not too long ago. So this is an important one, and bring your flags out, so we can donate them, and Linda will make sure you know exactly where to drop them off at. And Linda, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. I said in the video, but I honestly mean it, some of our best ideas, in fact, most of our great ideas, do come from residents who have an inspiration to help the community, or to, in this case, help our veterans. You know, Linda actually donated some stuff to, for our November 7th event that we had for Veterans Day, so people could see some of the stuff her family went through. And so, Linda, thank you very much for being supportive with the veterans, and can't wait to be out there on Monday, collecting flags with you, okay? That's all I have.
Thank you. I just have, no, there was one other proclamation that we didn't read here today, but we gave to the ABC Institute. So, congratulations, I know some of us were there today, before Do the Right Thing. So congratulations to them, and more great success for their students and for our city. It's a blessing to have them here with us, within our city limits. And I'll leave it at that. I hope everybody has a great Memorial Day weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. I won't go over everything that we've done in the last week or two, because our calendar has been full. We have, and the entire commission has been running around Broward County for the last two weeks. So I won't get into it, but I will highlight, and a lot of my colleagues have mentioned events that we've been to. But we did host the mayoral roundtable for the Broward County Public Schools, and we were at Junior Achievement. It was a great success. Superintendent Hepburn was there. He is an amazing leader. I actually do see a change in our, in the attitude, and the culture of our school district, and in our schools, and look forward to seeing what he is going to accomplish in the future. In June, they will be sending out to each and every one of us, what they're proposing in the future, how they're redirecting the schools, the buildings, exactly what they have in mind, the involvement of community, they ask that, you know, of course, it's a partnership. So, we had about, I think we had Bernadette, we had close to 40, 40 in attendance? Yep. So it was quite exceptional. And the highlight, but the highlight of my last four years, I have to say, is that I walked into the business center of Junior Achievement, and they had a class there. There had to be about 100 or 150 students that were sitting there. And they just finished a mock commission meeting, and they had a pseudo-mayor give a speech, and when I came out of the other meeting, they said, "Oh my God, come and see